Meeting to order. All three selectmen are present. Town administrators present. Recording for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Fred Melt. Thank you, Fred. Okay, gentlemen. Well, in the audience, I see no members of the public. I see a lot of town officials. I'm gonna just put a record on one minute. If you just say your name loudly for me. I'll start right here. Just say your name for the record.
John Wigan, project.
Back row.
Chris Armelotti, police chief.
Back row.
Woody.
Right this row.
Jeff Crosby, road agent.
Back row behind him.
John Fardier, town auditor.
Linda Landry, town clerk.
Jennifer Cornier, deputy town clerk.
Paul Leonard, holiday stewardess.
Mayor. Mayor. Thank you. Okay. I have some old minutes to approve, John.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2023 as amended.
I'll second that. Any discussion on those?
No, Mr. John.
Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No. None on purpose, I believe? Nope. Okay. The anticipated event tonight is we're having a public hearing on the budget and the warrants. Scheduled for 7:05. I have no hesitation. If anyone disagrees with me, I'd like to start maybe a couple of minutes early. We'll get you all on the way home. Fair enough. Any objections from the public?
I have a question.
Yes.
You have to go through every line, line by line, isn't that the rule?
I...
Yeah, because we all crafted it.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna shorten it a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. For me, I look at it as a dry run for me because I have to go before the voters.
Yeah, that's fine.
And so, but I will...
We didn't have to dissect everything.
No, I'm not gonna dissect everything. I'll give a more of an overview, but enough where I feel comfortable and I go into a town meeting.
Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
I think you could practice at home, you know.
Run there.
So noted, so noted.
In the shower, whatever.
And the thing is, my better half, who saw me practicing already, said, "Just don't get angry if there's any dumb questions. Just take them and answer them."
We know how much it does get angry.
You want me to ask dumb questions to make you feel more comfortable?
There you go, there you go.
The first thing is a dumb question. That's right.
All right. I'm gonna just open the public hearing for the town warrant for 2023. All right. I'm gonna start off the warrant. As the polls open, as well know, 14th day of March at 7 o'clock. It'll be preceded by a voting. Voting during the day will be the first two warrants by ballot. I'm gonna skip over those. One is for the election. The other is for an article for the Dunbar planning, the planning and zoning regulations. Second amendment. Those, if you're interested in reading about it, you can get copies of the zoning ordinance, right? As you exit in the planning board office. The third one is gonna be voted at the beginning of the meeting. It's for the Hargreaves, say, self-explanatory, we all know what that is. Now, the fourth one, that's the overview. That's the budget. And I'm gonna give you my, an overview of what I saw, what we did as a board to come up with a budget. First of all, I'd like to say to the town, tax rates are increasing. That's the bottom line. However, the majority of the tax rate increase on the town side, it's gonna be attributable to the road bond passed by the voters at last town meeting. The first payment on the bond is due this year, hence increase in taxes. Was the road bond a good move for this town? I'm gonna say absolutely yes. We netted an interest rate above 2.63% give or take. It depends upon which article you're reading, but it's a low interest rate. And it was a good bargain for the town for the road repairs we needed. Okay. Without this bond, the select board raised the operating budget about 3 cents from the tax rate. Say, 3 cents? With all that inflation, how is that so low? Well, last year, we had lapsing operating funds and unanticipated revenue. We took the majority of that and were returning that to the taxpayers by lowering their tax rate. As an addition, and a side note, the tax rate, as you know, is split between a June payment and a November payment. Well, the November payment will have about 16 new properties added to the valuation this April, and that will be applied towards the year-end tax rate. And along with that, we also know that room and meals, we've got a good room and meals tax at the state level, will also affect our tax rate year-end. So, there's money coming, but we can't project. Now, the budget strategy that this board followed was to maintain level services at a reasonable tax rate. It's tough to do with inflation. The challenging, that was the challenging goal for us because we saw inflation hit everything from electricity, health insurance, liability insurance, fuel supplies, and compensation, compensation to our town employees. One of our biggest challenges was how do we maintain a workforce to serve our Dunbar residents? This past year has been extremely difficult. We struggled with personnel issues. I'll give you an example. Mr. Woody Bond at the transfer station, he had significant turnover and many vacancies. He just, by year-end, he has crafted a team which appears to be working well. The police department is starting this calendar year, two full-time officers short and a smaller pool of part-timers to drop on. Our building inspector left in the summer. Why? For more hours and more pay. We had, the town offices were all, shall I say, jumping up because we had one administrative support person leaving the town offices, and there was a shuffling of positions at the town hall. We had vacancies on the planning board, highway department vacancy, and zoning board. Across the board, we had personnel issues, and that was a challenge. So, how do we, how do we handle that? How did the board handle it? Well, we looked at, inflation was a big thing, and people were looking for more dollars. And so, we all know that senior citizens got, in social security this year, they all know it, they got an 8.7% increase in social security payments. That's huge. Did we do that with town employees? No. Do we do it compensation? No. We did not follow that because that would have been 8.7% across the board. What we did, we reviewed compensation for all positions across the town, elected and wage, and salary earners, wage earners. Thing is, we compared them to other towns of similar size and adjusted as needed. Our goal was to basically pay the median prevailing wage and avoid either being the top or the bottom. We picked out about 15 towns that we compared ourselves to. And some people got big raises and some people got minimal raises. We split it between two things. The average, which we compensated up and down across the entire spectrum, but everyone got a 4% COLA. So, the two together kinda like offset the inflation impact to our wage earners, our employees, elected persons, everybody. We needed to do that just to have someone answer the phone for you when you call for town services. I mean, how'd you have to have the police department, you call 911 and, "Sorry, there's only one person out on the call, there's no one available." It was getting to that point. Or the transfer station, "Sorry, there's no recycling today because we have no one to staff that." It was, it was a challenging year. Believe it or not, this was the same approach the school board approach did last year to their positions. They looked at every individual positions, changed them appropriately to reflect prevailing wages, then gave a minimal COLA, as you recall. I think it was a 3% or 4%. Yeah, but it was minimal compared to what was going on. Thank you. So, that was my overview of where, how we started our crafting budget. Any comments, gentlemen? Should I continue? Okay. So, I'm gonna go with the budget sheet. I have two sheets to follow. I have one copy that you all have. I'm gonna go quickly through it since we're all town officials here, yes. So, I'm gonna start with the executive. Look at the budget. Page one. Essentially here, we have compensation increases. Those are the biggest line items there. We'll skip run down, so it went up to 162K. Next item, election registration by statistics. Yes, we had paid compensation. We have a few additional hours for the deputy town clerk, but it didn't go up as much because we have fewer elections. Financial administration. Again, we have some increased compensation. Continuing on.
You're assessing now?
I'm sorry?
You're assessing now?
Assessing, yes.
If you can follow this one.
I'm following both. I have notes on one, and this is what public has, and one on page two. Essentially, if you see the, there's one item went from $10,000 to $16,000. Those are what we have to pay for what we call annual pickups, where we review like the building department, all the new construction, all the improvements to the homes. It went up last year, we continued it, we kept it well-funded. Little bit, a little increase in software, continuing down. Legal. Legal was essentially flat. Personnel administration. We've had some decreases in our unemployment and workman's comp, but we've got nailed on other insurances for a liability down the road. And let's see, longevity, we had a decreased savings. We have some of our long-term time, long-time, how do we say that? Our senior employees are leaving us, so we don't have to pay as much as in those bonuses for longevity. Okay. Page three. Planning and zoning, minimal increase, essentially flat. Government buildings. Now, this is, last year, we cut the budget quite a bit down because we preserved a lot of dollars for the town hall, the monstrosity across the way. It's almost finished. But the thing is, we let go some things that are gonna have to be addressed this year. Specifically, we have three roofs on town buildings that need to be addressed. That's gonna be costly. We have a highway garage, gasoline pumps that have to be addressed and brought up to standards. Those are gonna be some major hits, so that budget line increased quite a bit. And going on to the next page. Am I going fast enough, everybody?
Excellent.
Okay. Cemetery. The cemetery is pretty much flat. There were some line items that go left and right, up and down, but essentially at the end of the day, it's flat. Insurance. While primics may have lowered some, and they give it and they take it. The liability is now, is up for us. So, I'm gonna leave it at that. It's, it went up about 10%. Police department. Even though, it went up a little bit, but even though we're short two officers, we're actively recruiting them. So, we have to budget appropriately as if they were here, and so we budget for them. So, there's, and, and across the board, we look at all personnel, and they get increases in pay so we can remain competitive to recruit. Next item, fire department. Fire department has some, we had some equipment issues. We wanted to keep our equipment top-notch, so we increased some of the maintenance item, maintenance line for the fire department. Small increase in the pay and a lot of the fire ponds and fire suppression equipment needs to be updated. And so, we appropriately increased those lines. Building department. Again, building department, they got here, we got a, we got a personnel line went up, we have a COLA and a step increase for one of our two personnel there. And the building inspector, we had a, we hired a new building inspector. It went down a little bit, but in reality, we're trying a new concept in building inspector. We're guaranteeing them so many hour, he's guaranteeing us so many hours available for the town, and we're just trying a different model for the building inspector. It's called a, what was the term we used?
Stipend.
Stipend.
Stipend, bullets, you were.
Right. Rather than outright wages, we pay a stipend now. And we're trying that as something new, and so far, it's been working extremely well. That was since last August. Next page, highway department. Highway department, again, we have some payroll increases to be expected. But if you look at highway department, materials went up. If you just look at winter roll salt, for example, we budgeted $70,000, they spent $80,000, and so we're budgeting another $75,000. We're up in that $5,000. And there's a few other lines we're budgeting. There's a give and take on the highway budget, and it says that the highway, the department manages itself as far as they can move money within the lines there. Okay, transfer station. Let me turn the page with me. It's all a waste of space around. All right. Again, we have salary increases. We have costs for to get rid of our stuff, bottom line. And so, that's why you have expenses there. I wanna reach out, you're gonna see in the town report, I give kudos to the transfer station manager and to the town administrator for effectively, year-end, we had an increase at the last minute as we were ready to renew our contract. And they scurried, both of them worked together to get at some alternatives to save some town some significant dollars. Thank you. And I think as I mentioned in the town, our message, and I'd like to thank both of you today for making that happen. He could have sat, when he first got that contract to us, he could have sat down fat, dumb, and happy, but he didn't. He aggressively sought out, alerted us, and acted appropriately with lean to get an RFP out, Christopher Propoles, and he made it happen. I salute you. Okay? And lean, thank you. Welfare is essentially flat. However, there's a new line in there we wanted to separate. We have a deputy who works in this office, when she's, when the director's not available, we wanna make sure accounting is appropriate. It's more of an admin change, but the money's about the same. Parks and recreation went on. We had $400 last year, we up to $1,000. We have some public interest in taking over that committee again, so we're kind of anxious and looking for some activities this year. So, we plus that line up. It's kinda, we return it to a $1,000 line they had before. If it works out well, we may see that increase in the future. Old home days flat. Library, they had personnel increases, house cost increases. And I get to the last page, budget total. Bond payment, yeah, I'm sorry, bond payment. This is what the voters, the voters asked for, and this is year one of our bond payment. And it's about $180,000. And the thing is, we've had a significant number of roads repaired. We spent, we expended about 50% of the budget, 49% of it. We have about half the budget left this year. With the weather holding, I expect the road agent to execute on that close to half a million dollars this year coming here.
And just a special note, that is the highest bond payment. We have two periods that were into this total bill. All the rest will go down from here.
Okay. So, I'm gonna get to the last page now. Yeah, we had $1,000 in the budget for, we have to maintain some of these conservation land, and one of it requires a town to ante up some dollars. And so, we put a line item in there for $1,000. So, there's some, a give and take of where the money will come from, but we wanted to make sure we had some money set aside for the conservation land if needed.
That's where the Concanuit town forest.
Thank you. Okay. So... Back page now. So, we have a budget of $3,281,810. Of three, okay. Of that, essentially, I've taken the lapsing funds, and we're taking the budget surplus, virtually all of it, and applying it towards, this is your dollars. I've taken your taxpayers' dollars. We are applying it towards the bill to lower the tax rate. And so, right now, we have, we take those lapsing funds, the proposed budget, and it drops it down approximately $200,350,000. And we add projected revenues. I'm gonna go over revenues in a minute, but we have projected revenues, we actually have $1,179,46, $1,179,46 of projected revenues. We subtract that from the proposed budget of, as I said, $3,281,000. We have to raise some taxes, $2,102,764. I stand corrected. That's after we apply those surpluses. It drops down to $1,743,988. So, for a net estimate increase of 47 cents, with 3 cents coming from the operating budget and about 44 cents coming from the bond. Any questions so far? I'm open to questions.
I got a general statement.
Sure.
See how we're still on that part. And I don't know if the force mentioning at town meeting or just see how it plays out. I could mention it, or you could mention it. But the bond, we had a year off last year because we had been appropriating $100,000 every year
Right.
to go towards paving, specifically paving projects. But in lieu of that, we got the bond. So, last year, we didn't raise $100,000. So, that acted in a, you know...
To balance it out.
Balance it out. This year, we're appropriating $180,000, I'm gonna pay the bond, so that would be like $100,000 from last year and $100,000 we would do this year if we follow the same methodology that we've been following a bunch of years. So, our hope was when we crafted the bond was to get those to equalize. And in my estimation, between last year's non-appropriating money and this year's appropriating, those two pretty much balance each other out.
So noted. You follow what I'm getting at?
Oh, absolutely, I do. And that was...
So, it's, it's still money, but it's kind of a, not manipulating the numbers, but moving them around so they equal somewhat out. So, we avoided any big tax rate. But actually, you got a tax reduction last year because it was $100,000 we didn't have to appropriate, and I believe we didn't have to make any bond payments last year. So, this year, we're like doubled up a little bit. And next year, as Dave said, it's gonna decrease, so it'll be getting closer together.
Yeah, our hope was to have a little bit more even.
Yeah.
And when they gave us the bond paperwork back, the way that they schedule it, like any bank.
It had increased.
They've taken the majority of their money up the front end of it.
Yeah.
And they're front-loading it, and then they're dropping down substantially every year to, we get to the end, our payments are very small.
Yeah, it flip-flops the other way.
And I have to say, we struck lightning. We struck gold when we went for the interest rate.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the interest rates are ridiculous.
I think we did that at the best time.
I think it was a wonderful opportunity, but...
I mean, we still gotta pay it, it doesn't make any difference, but it did just move numbers around. Because if we didn't go for the bond...
Would you like me to say something like the $100 thing?
If you want, or I can, whatever is easier. If it's better for you to do it, you can do it.
Okay, I'll just mention that normally we...
Yeah, I think you ought to scroll that in there. Because when, you know, when it's a shock factor, you say, "Oh, highway department got a bond, it's costing us all this money."
But the warrants...
Yes, it is.
But the warrants are less costly because we don't have the $100.
But the only big difference is, we are obligated now to raise that money somehow and pay it. Before, when it was a single warrant article, we could strike it down and save $100,000. Now, we're obligated to make the bond pay. And if we don't wanna fund it, we have to take...
And that $100,000 every year costs us around 32 cents on the dollar.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so it's kinda, you know, it's a bit of a wash. That's all, I just wanted...
So noted. And I think it's, I'm gonna mention that because...
Okay, good.
Because what it does is, warrants on us high this year.
Okay.
Because we don't have the 100K in it.
Yep, exactly.
And we're paying it because it's built into the...
Yeah, we have to, we have no choice.
All right, I just thought that maybe we're...
Nope, I think it's great, great idea, I'll mention that. Okay. Now, I'd like to go to part two to talk about revenues now.
You want to see if there's any other questions in this section?
Questions?
How many years that bond payment?
10.
10?
We'll get to the end, John, it's very small, only $24,000 or something because they took all their money upfront, so...
Okay. The revenues are much smaller. I just, we'll talk quickly about that, but I'll go through it. Land use, I'm gonna go stop page one. These are, this is an estimate. This is only a budget estimate. And our philosophy is we budget revenues conservatively. Because if we budget aggressively and we come up short, we have to take it out of our rainy day plan, and that's can be a challenge. So, these are conservative estimates. We did make some changes from last year, and I'll point those out. Land use taxes, basically essentially the same, flat. EU taxes, flat. Notice we got a little bit more, but there's no guarantee we're gonna get that this year, so we budgeting flat. We lower the tax cut and payment, lieu of taxes, those are a miniscule amount, $500. Next one, interest on taxes, again, essentially flat. Business licenses. These are for motor vehicles. Now, for the last four or five years, the, we've been increasing in revenues. So, we increased this line by $50,000 because for the last four years, we've been consistently higher than what we budgeted. So, we conservatively increased it 50K. We don't wanna go over because economy could turn sour and we're stuck again. Everyone's hanging on to their old cars. So, my recommendation to you, buy a new car. Okay. Building code permits. Again, we had a boom year last year. We had some new houses. I think we're gonna get some more building permits this year. We have more houses coming in, but we went conservatively. Other licenses, again, we went up a little bit there, but it's still conservative.
Oh, that's flat.
I'm sorry?
It's flat.
Flat, yeah, that's true. Okay. Continuing on.
Is it a typo because it's not flat?
No, it's not flat.
My licenses is 10 and 10, but you're looking at the full total at the bottom where you see the increases. That includes all those additions.
All above.
Yeah, it's one...
So, it's kinda confusing right there.
It is flat. Okay. Other accounts, revenue from other departments. Again, flood control, it's, everything is essentially flat. Highway block grant, we budgeted, we actually got 102 last year. We're only gonna budget 90 this year. Flood control reimbursement, sometimes it's delayed, $70,000. And if you notice, we've had a delay, the legislature sometimes wants, they eye that all the time and wanna take it. So, we budget 70,000, but it's always a risk. Room and meals tax. I wanna talk about room and meals again. You see, you budget 135. Well, that depends upon our Massachusetts brethren who come up here and spend their dollars and buy, go and eat at restaurants and stay at hotels. If we have a bad season, room and meals taxes plummet and we get less. And the thing is, we really never see that money. Lean, the town administrator puts her numbers together, what we do during the year, sends them in October to the DRA. DRA does the little magic and then figures out, well, the governor's gonna send, and the legislative's gonna send us so many dollars room and meals, and we lower your tax rate from there, and we set the tax rate at DRA at the state level.
So... Just one other thing I wanna note on there, the ARPA grant is the last line. You'll see this, this year in 2023, we don't have any ARPA grant. We actually got 152 disbursements, which we used on the town hall building. So, that's why you can see 299 looks like it's budgeted much lower than the prior years, but it's actually just because of the ARPA grant.
Can I also point out that if you had looked at the 2022 budget as we proposed at town meeting last year, those numbers came in at the 299. These adjustments are made after, at the tax rate setting. So, auditor requires that I make an entry, it adjusts or changes my original estimate, it inflates it. So, it looks like the 743,582 from 2022 is what we had budgeted, but it's not. Those were numbers that I had to increase the actual budget that we had projected, so it reflected the actual money that we received. So, that's where it looks like it's a, it's a higher number, but every year...
They added the ARPA grant to it.
That category would always be in that $300,000 range.
And there were no more ARPA grants. Okay.
And room and meals, the reason we don't follow that higher amount is because they go up and down, and we just, that 135 is gonna save number. We typically give the balance back to the tax rate.
Because if we, if we went up, we spent appropriately like it was going up, and it came down, it comes out of our hide, or shall I say, the reserves. And the reserves are there to prevent, for emergencies and contingency, but we can't afford to do that, and we don't wanna do that to the town and to the citizens. My income from other departments, I just wanna point out one thing here. If you look at recycling, they had a banner year last year, a lot of recycling. And so, we conservatively increased the budget line. They normally had 20K. We increased it to, we expect 30K this year. So, it's a small increase, again, conservatively. They had 47K last year. How we gonna get 47K? As Woody would say, who knows? Because if the markets are up, markets are down. We just don't know. It's unknown. Disposal fees, I just wanna point out. That's about it. Everything else is pretty much flat. Police special duty and all that kinda stuff, those are all income streams coming in. I call them the ash and trash of all the little things we get. Those are all unknowns. We didn't really budget for those because we don't know what we're gonna get. And I tell you, chief's, chief's working his guys overtime and filling in these shifts. They don't wanna go in details usually unless they're really hurting for money. All right. Sale of town property, again, we budgeted, those are all unknowns. We have no idea what we're gonna get, but maybe we will have a junk vehicle from the police department this year if all warrants pass. But I think it's, those are all unknowns. Interest on deposits, again, historically, the last several years, we were getting virtually no interest. We might get a little bump in interest this year, but we don't wanna plan on it. We don't know. Rents on town property, that deposit, you said 74K. That was a donation for the building across the street. That was a, a donation for the, uh, building across the street. And that is not being repeated, and a couple of years ago, remember that one rent we were collecting every month, the Kimball Pond? It's gone, it burnt down.
That donation was from the town hall.
Restoration committee.
Restoration committee, yeah. It was the final amount of money that they had raised in the building.
All right, and the other revenues, uh, again, those are, again, ash and trash, um, there are a lot of them past rows. A lot of times residents, sometimes, hopefully very few, residents will bounce checks. We, they, the bank bills us, we pass it on to the resident, the bill, the same to them, and it's a zero-sum game, it's, uh, those are just, like, getting some more ash, uh, some miscellaneous incomes, but really it's a pass through. Any questions on revenues? Again, this is an estimate, I, we did our best, we, we conservatively estimated them, and that's how we're gonna stand, that's, we, it's certainly how this board has always, at least the last, uh, seven years I've been here.
Why is that transfer station one for nineteen thousand dollars?
Those are the fees that he collects at the, um.
Those are.
They don't expect any?
No, no, see, if you look at the codes on the left, John, the thirty-four oh one, that is the whole category, there's fifteen, there's twenty items there, it adds it up together, so the only one that we really identify is the recycling income, and then all the other codes get added together.
It's a, it, it kinda like adds it to that one number, top number. See the forty-seven?
Yep, so that includes the numbers belong?
You got it.
I always get confused with that too, John. Like, put them in the lines they belong.
All right.
I think it's, uh, we're kinda stuck with the software they provide to us, and, uh, we try to make it work the best we can. And the thing is, up here, we sometimes will rock, rock our brains out. Dave will ask the end question, Lean will say, why is this way? But I don't understand it, and we've, we've hashed this back for the last two months, we've been hashing it back and forth, and Justin's the new guy, he's just learning this, and he, he sometimes, what looks alike, what are you guys talking about? All right, enough said of that, any questions on budget, on income? Moving along with, moving along to the warrants again. I'm gonna go with warrant five. Some of, uh, to see if the town will vote and raise an appropriate sum of fourteen thousand dollars to be added to the revaluation capital reserve fund. Every several years, we have to do a reeval, and that costs dollars, and rather than doing one major, um, increase with a, with a dol, amount of dollars, we collect a little bit, so it's less impact with voters, less up and down, it's just more of a straight line, as we collect a little bit for that reeval.
Mike, I'm gonna suggest, because you're actually gonna label for yourself number four. Right, so we're gonna go with Mike on that.
Or do you wanna do that now?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what we're doing now, right?
Okay, yeah.
Again, I would suggest Justin on that reeval, because that's a one that's done every year.
Wanna talk to that, John?
We do typically have a board of assessors that speaks on it.
Yeah, we're just doing the select portion of it now.
Okay. Item six. Excuse me, when is, when is the next reeval scheduled?
Twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
So they'll be putting it out to bid at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Item six. That was good, John, that was a smart question, thank you.
No double question.
Exactly. Okay, uh, item six, to see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of five thousand dollars to be added to transfer station vehicle, we talked about this, this is for the capital reserve to keep our reserve growing, again, for the same mech, same reason, we don't like to have spikes in our budget. The same in number seven, I'm gonna go a little bit quicker.
Well, hold on, let's pick a person, Justin.
Justin.
Talk to that.
Yep. Number seven is about the, uh, uh, we're gonna add seventy thousand dollars to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund. Chief, you wanna talk to that at the town meeting?
Sure.
I'll second him.
And Dave will be your backup in case you become ill.
Okay.
Well, we generally tag team it, you talk to him.
And the thing is, and we all will augment, if you get questions that you don't feel comfortable with, we'll augment you as appropriate. Okay, number eight, to see if the town will appoint a board of selectmen to act as agents to expend from the existing fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund. I can talk to that, or you want to?
I'll talk to that.
Okay. I'm gonna explain, I'm gonna explain that to the, to, to the other town officials here right now. Connecticut is an example of a state, which is a wealthy state, they like to dump their turnover, their fire department vehicles on a regular basis. Sometimes they're only four to five years old, and they're in pristine shape. To expend from the capital reserve fund, you have to go to town meeting and get permission from the legislative body. John gets a lead, and it's in April, for example, he can't act until the following year, because he can't get an emergency town meeting for this, for an expenditure. So it allows the select void to support John in making a purchase off-cycle or during the calendar year, that's the whole reason for that, so we don't lose an opportunity to pick up a good vehicle for a fire department.
Or lease.
Or lease. Okay. Uh, ten. And see if the town rules, uh, raise an appropriate sum of ten grand for the police.
No, I didn't check that.
This night?
Yeah.
Okay. To see if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of thirty thousand dollars to purchase a stretcher loading system for the ambulance with the rise of withdrawal from the fire department. I'm not gonna read the rest of it. Bottom line, this is a, John, are you gonna speak for that?
Yep.
For the, for the benefit of the people.
Yep, I'll say.
Okay. For the people here, I'm just gonna explain to it, when you lift, uh, a big guy into the ambulance, it, it takes muscles. No, but what this does is facilitates the movement of a, of a, of a large patient into the transfer station.
Into the transfer station.
Into the ambulance. In, into the ambulance without hurting the, uh, the.
Let's go. All pages.
I think John can speak on that, because he did explain them to you.
John, will you speak to that?
It's south is over two hundred miles.
Plus, Dave remembers him coming in, what, last year for it too? He's got two of her calls.
Twenty nineteen, we bought that, it was delivered in twelve, I bought twenty nineteen.
There you go.
All right, moving on.
You're like a date?
Number ten.
Date.
We're gonna raise ten grand for the police vehicle in capital reserve fund.
I'll speak to that with Chris.
Well, Chris will be the primary one.
You'll be the secondary one.
The next one is, um, one of his junk vehicles.
Very, very junk.
You got, you got twenty-nine hundred dollars for it, we wanna put it in the same fund, and it's gotta be done by vote, that's what that's all about. You'll speak to that, Chris?
Yeah, that was a two thousand eight Ford. That was rusted out.
Now, here's the, here's the number twelve. And I'm, I'm gonna start off with this, this will be speaking, spoken to by, uh, Chris at town meeting. But bottom line, he wanted a Mustang. And those electric Mustangs that go fast, and you can sneak up on people with no, no engines, you can really quiet stealth. We said no to the Mustang, no, in all seriousness. He's got, he's got a twenty seventeen, uh, Ford with over two hundred, two hundred and three miles on it, and it's at its last life. And, um, last year we were off-cycle, because he had to replace another one with a seized engine. And so hopefully with this will be the last one, he comes to the town, asks for a vehicle, and then we're gonna go back on cycle every two years. You're gonna talk to that a little more at town meeting.
Yeah, and if, and so the, the car that got approved last year is replacing our other twenty seventeen that has the way we, we calculate mileage is we do engine idle hours as well, because police cars idle a lot. So the, the car that that's replacing has three hundred and ten thousand on the engine. We ordered it in March of last year, and we are still waiting to get it on the road, so by the time that car is on the road, it's about a year. So even though we're ordering these cars, it's taking a really long time, we had our order canceled, they upped the price, we found one at a dealership down in Mass in October, we dropped it off at the upfitter, and we're still waiting for that car. So when that comes in, we're gonna take one of our seventeens, rotate it out. If this car passes at town meeting, we're gonna sell that twenty seventeen, try and recruit some money for the town, and then we're gonna rotate out our other twenty seventeen as a detail and backup patrol car, because that car, uh, assigned to Sergeant Todd right now, that has two hundred and fifty-four thousand on the engine.
A little bit less at town meeting, only if you get.
Oh, for sure, I just, I wanted to just gloss over for.
If you could pummel a question, that's one thing.
Yep.
And just for the record, he's gonna have, uh, Mr. Moderator, he's gonna have to ask permission to speak.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. All right, third, uh, so, uh, Chris will speak to that, and it'll be augmented by either Dave or myself.
Yep.
Thirteen, to raise twenty thousand dollars to the highway vehicle reserve fund, again, similar to other ones, uh, we just wanna keep it reserved, so we don't get big spikes in our tax rate. Routine.
You wanna do that one?
Yeah, you can speak to that, yep. Justin will speak to that.
You'd speak to that?
Yeah.
Yep, no problem. Do the academic.
Exactly. Okay, the, the, the next one is a new one this year. Uh, we've, the, the selectman found.
Not a new one, it's a.
Well, the selectman found that we do have a, a reserve, a capital reserve for land acquisition, it's got forty-five thousand dollars. We wanna start growing that a little bit, because as land opportunities arise, uh, we, we wanna be an opportunity to grab a piece of parcel of land with, with voter consent, uh, for the benefit of the town. And so we're throwing some dollars into it, it brings up the fifty thousand dollars, this is a small amount, but the thing is, we gotta start growing it sometime. And that was the reason for that warrant.
I'll speak to that.
And Dave will speak to that, I'll be your backup, Dave.
Okay.
Number fifteen, to see if the town will raise, uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars for milfoil control of gorm pond, I make reference to the milfoil, we've had another great year in milfoil. And essentially by.
No milfoil.
No milfoil.
Or you'd hurl.
And so, um, but we, we do have divers come in, which we have to pay for, we put a little few dollars towards it, we get a state matching grant. And so this is, there's no impact here, because tax impact, because remember, uh, we established a revolving fund for, uh, milfoil control, uh, for milfoil control. The invasive plant species capital reserve fund, established in twenty eighteen, that's where the money comes from, and, uh, we keep our excess money in there as needed. And.
Bob, you just speaks on it?
Bob, Bob.
Yeah, yeah, let's go.
Well, I'm sorry for the good news, no milfoil.
I already do.
And, but also mention other ponds in town too.
Yes, yeah, we have, we work to check all the ponds.
Okay. Uh, number sixteen, I'm gonna have the, uh, cemetery, uh, speak to that, if not, I'll speak to that.
Why don't we have Justin do it, since he's.
Yeah, okay. To me, it's, uh.
What happens is, Don will get up and speak to it, and you back him up, and look for anything he's missed in it.
Yep.
So it's more clear to the public.
Same thing on the next one? No, yeah, the thing is, um, yes.
Yep.
There's a. Essentially, we, we wanna establish a mo, expend, monument expendable trust fund to, for the, for additional maintenance, I think of cemetery monuments. It's basically, it's basically be allowed to accept privately donated gifts, legacies, and devices deposited in this fund. Normally, when the cemetery, uh, collects some dollars, it goes into the general fund. And then we can put it, taxes or whatever, but this way, he's, wants to create a fund which can be almost perfect, uh, self-maintaining and pay for some improvements to the cemetery, we had no problem with that, so we're supporting that. I'm gonna put Dawn on that, who, and Dave, you will speak there.
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay.
We'll put you on the veterans.
Yeah, the veterans, uh, number eighteen, I'm not gonna read through that whole paragraph. There's some, the legislative body at the state made some changes to the verbiage. And this verbiage is kinda screwy, but this is directly from DRA. And we have to incorporate this in to continue our five hundred dollar tax credit to our wartime veterans. So it's a housekeeping event, but if we don't do it, we're gonna screw the veterans in town who've been getting it for years. Any questions on that particular one? Nineteen and twenty, those are just essentially, uh, catch-alls, if anything comes up before the meeting, we can act upon it. All the articles together, if they all pass, it's a thirty-six cent impact to the town. I think it's reasonable. Some tertiary times.
Lean, one other quick thing.
Yeah.
On all of these ones we're asking to add money to, can, over on the right-hand side, can we have the dollar amount that's in the existing fund?
Yep, um, I can type up, and for, for the recording.
Just for the town meeting.
Right, for the recorder, can, I didn't catch who was speaking on whatever, as that came up.
I wrote them down here, if you want my copy.
Okay, just so I get those for her too.
And since we have, we said so first, um, Mike, can we say, uh, uh, selectmen favor all the warrants as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
All three to zero.
Correct.
That's what hashtag dash hashtag means.
Well, Dave, in, in the past, we have actually voted against recommending warrants before.
Yeah, no, I know.
And, but this time, uh.
Yeah, somewhere along the line, somebody.
Pretty much asked them out the last three, four weeks.
Exactly.
We've been arguing.
Okay, um.
No, you're always right.
Okay, if, any other questions, this, now, this is the public hearing section of our meeting, I'm gonna, if there's no further questions, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing section.
Just one question on, uh, warrant articles, number nineteen.
Nineteen.
Should it be to accept the reports of agents? Because aren't you basically accepting everything that's in the town report? We haven't. It's been a long time, but I.
But I know that I.
You hear the reports, and they're in the town report.
Right.
Grab an old one to see what the wording was.
The same, but what I have done is on the first page, where the seal is, it, I've also added, uh, this is to certify, the information contained in this report is taken from official records, is incomplete to the best of our knowledge and belief, and I have the selectmen's names there, so this basically.
Didn't it used to say to accept instead of to?
I.
It'd be an old copy of the warrant.
And, yeah, we can find an old copy to look at, that might be the only thing that I just wanna look at before you finalize it.
We'll double check that.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's.
Number nineteen. Any other comments?
Good job.
As far as each of the warrant articles, though, too, again, at the conclusion, majority vote required. Each of those articles don't indicate what is required for approval.
Uh, I see what you're saying, the, some have parentheses, the majority vote required, and some don't, all right. Lean, do you see that?
Here, what's that?
Uh, let's look at seventeen, for example, it says at the, at the bottom, majority vote required. It, other ones don't have majority vote required.
Seventeen.
Add that on all of them, because eight, eight hasn't, is what.
Eighteen is missing.
There's a bunch of them.
Do, is that, um, is it because we're establishing new articles, or?
Well, some of, like the capital reserve, majority, there's some of them that have it, some don't.
So what do you say, John, would you rather I take them off completely, or include them on all of them?
Instead of you, the voter.
So.
Let them know if it's, if it's majority is, majority is required.
Then it should be on all of them, okay.
Good.
Whatever it is.
Good pickup, thank you. Anything else?
One other question, and, um, that's just on the the articles are all numbered, will it have the word article in front of each number? Because when you, you just, it, it just has a number in front of these, and somebody just says number sixteen, it's really supposed to be article sixteen, article.
Aren't they always that way?
Yeah, they're always like that.
I tell you what, what I'll do is, uh, I'll make sure that when we address them, I can talk about article one. I'll make sure I verbally I'll address it.
The moderator, Mark McLeod, does that anyway.
But as John says, to educate the public, you gotta get them familiar with the jargon. And you say, if somebody just on the street says, hey, did you hear, you know, about article six, you know, not number six, article six, it's a little more specific to.
Okay, we, we have a moderator here, go ahead.
Yeah, in the past, it always said article one, article two, whatever.
It did, but I maybe broke it then.
We can add that, I don't see, gentlemen, do you have any problems with that?
We've added to the minutes.
I've never seen it like that.
That was from years ago, that's where it used to go.
Yeah, that's from that one.
I know, but in, I know in the minutes it's reported that way, right? Because it goes from a, a numerical number to a number, and you know, plus, uh, right. That's right, the town report's not in the printer yet, so I can spend some more time on it.
I have two thousand ten.
Just gonna make it longer.
I wasn't singling here, I was just looking at the numbers, and I'm like, what?
How many years do you have there?
No, the thing is, the thing is, even in two thousand eleven, it was, it was listed, what numerically, however, in the minutes.
Traditionally, I, I put it in there, but I'm thinking to be consistent, the, the warrants. The warrant maybe will follow.
But the thing is, um, can I, I just saw another discrepancy. In the past, it was Roman numerals and the other, the other was uh-
Can I just say that in the language of the Department of Revenue, it doesn't say article? It's, it starts with the word, are you in favor of?
Right, because it doesn't know, I, yeah, it doesn't know, are you, not gonna number the-
I'll bring it up. I don't know if I'm- We'll, we'll take another consideration.
Okay.
Okay. Jeff?
I just got a question. Well, Chief Chris just brought up a couple of points to me. One of them's with my highway department. We got two different numbers. We got six nineteen something on one page and on another page, we got five hundred and ninety-three, six twenty-five. I believe it's six hundred and nineteen.
Oh, yeah, who's the higher one?
The higher one?
Oh, right, one.
Which, what are you looking at?
On the wa- on the breakdown of the warrant, the numbers are different.
And then you have the, then you have your breakdown of budget file.
I understood.
Oh, it's because I've broken out your salary. I have to be transparent with the elected officials.
Oh, my salary is on-
And take out his salary and put it in a separate line. And you'll find the same thing with the selectmen, the town clerk, the reporters.
Uh, just for the record-
It's a lot of math work for me, let me-
Hey, learn something.
For the record, I questioned it because I'm looking at the executive line.
Yeah.
And I'm saying myself, this is this, this afternoon, I'm going through it. And I'm saying, what is the difference here? And it's purely salaries, so I, I don't know.
Sharp eyes over here, you know.
Well, that's, 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 that's the board's direction. Saying, why don't we transparent?
That makes sense, that's fine. It's a hundred and four somewhere.
It is, the total, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, last set of question, last set of, last all questions. Comments? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you for your input. I, and the thing is, for the record, Ron, if you listen, I missed you. Now, Ron Solcom, I say that uh, with, with a, with a, from my heart because Ron would be here, uh, I've seen many years he's been here. And he had those tough questions for me and it gave me a good practice for the town, town meeting. So I miss him. And uh, because-
But you were ready.
I was ready for him this year. Okay, um, if you, I'm gonna adjourn for maybe one minute. If you wanna leave, you can. We're gonna continue with it, with our procedures for this evening, but the town, the hearing is over.
You're all settled here, right?
Yes, sir.
Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night. I'm gonna treat from the yard.
Thank you.
I don't think we can explain that one.
Oh, you need me to s- uh, sign something?
Yes.
Sorry, I have to go out of order. Thank you. We're in a minute.
John, they got the panel wired today. Heard the alarm beeping when I went in, I don't know if they reset it at the end of the day or what.
It's front door on us there.
Yeah, we're still waiting for a couple of pieces to throw hard.
I didn't know we didn't put something there.
Cause we have the touchpad in there.
Good point, I'm glad you said something. There's a little nugget in here.
Right in front of the touchpad.
Bet you lucked it right there.
Thank you very much.
She rocks on?
Second floor, so yeah.
Yeah, that will go in your personal file, but it's-
It's coming off, it looks a lot different without sheetrock on.
Thanks for all that, appreciate it.
Does it look good?
Have a good night. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Me, I've lived in this city.
Good to see you, Fred. What do you see?
As you said, they're already gone, right?
Wow.
Where?
Yeah.
Well, they're done hanging, I think I just bought it. They only went above the, the wood, right, the rail.
Hey, why do you keep, why do you keep taking them on on Friday nights?
Who's that?
This guy here.
Yep. What?
Last, you took them all last Friday night?
Yeah.
And the thing is, he, he almost, lucky I can't close the transfer station because he would have been able to work.
I'm retired.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Goes for a smile, it was effective.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Um, hold it up soon.
Okay.
Something fell off. It don't, try.
Okay, thank you, John, your alarm.
Yeah, you make all right, phone station though?
Have a good night.
Oh, the electrician did the next morning?
Me.
He said, you know, shut the whole system down for that. He says, like, the guy does them all the time, so he did it with a line.
Well, you don't connect the wires.
Right.
He probably just pulled them away.
Pulled them away and capped them all, so. But it was beeping today when he was in there, so I think it was because the power went out then. I just hope he did the restart properly. If you haven't heard anything, he probably did.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, John.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna re-adjourn that from our one to two minute break there. Uh, we did the public warrant, we voted on the warrant and the speaker's, uh, Lean, I wanted to make sure, Dave will give you the copy with the name.
I have his copy.
Okay. I'm gonna go through the mailbox. I didn't open up a public comment, I apologize.
You did earlier on.
No, not the public comment.
Yeah, you did.
Well, you asked for people's names.
I just asked people to say their names.
Oh. We got enough time in.
Yeah. Okay.
We saved it so there's less people.
Well, it's an optional part of the meeting, but I still relish it. Okay, uh, mailbox item is gonna go right to. We have the public, uh, there was a complaint, the ES, uh, the ES made a complaint. This is about Mr. Brezga. And uh, the, the, there was no violation of any weight, well, wet lands, just, uh, this is more information copy. Okay. Okay. It was inspected by forestry and the permits were given. Inspection confirmed there are no violations within jurisdiction, no actions taken. This is by the, uh, the ES. All right.
That was from a neighbor.
Yep. And a butter, a butter, and they complained that he was violating the law and it was, he followed procedures exactly.
Yep.
So we're all, I'm glad people follow procedures. All right, next item, um, if recall, we had that, uh, piece of property that the uh, conservation, uh, committee, commission, uh, purchased and we're just waiting on closing. Still waiting on closing. However, we made some progress this week and uh, I'm gonna stand by for it, Lean, so just-
Put something up on that.
That is, that, we've just finally got the deed today, so this is actually making-
So it was just all deed prep?
Making the paperwork, um-
Do I need to sign this?
Yes, you do. It's an ex- a request, an agreement for an extension from the original date on the auction.
Remember the date you were worried about last week?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's an extension.
Yeah.
So that's all it is then?
Yeah, that particular part is.
So I, town number I'm signing for?
Yep. And then, um, the second attachment is the deed that actually came in immediately following that. So our, our, uh, the deed is in our attorney's, um, hands reviewing it. And so you, I'm, you'll probably hear from them soon. Uh, we are ready to go with releasing the funds in the bank, so that's not gonna hold anything up. And uh, you'll be able to receive their funds electronically like they requested.
Yeah, sure.
I'll scan that back to them. Actually just came in late today.
I don't, you wanna see this?
Make sure that one's, uh-
Just, just the, just the, it's a formality for the, for the, uh, real estate extension.
I didn't know if you wanted to see it.
And that's what the deed will look like, it's in, being reviewed by our town attorney.
Okay. We'll assign that.
Yep.
That's Lean's file. Okay, it took a long time, but it's, we're making progress on it. All right, I have some homework for everybody. Um, I would like to have, um, the town hall second floor use policy reviewed. And if you got changes, we can talk about it next week. I think we'll have time, next week's agenda. We're getting closer to the, uh, Dave's gonna beat, I beat my, uh, one April opening note maybe.
I hope.
And so I wanna have this in place. Gentlemen, Lean, give me a copy for everyone, so that's a take-home item.
And then the other take-home item would be this capital improvement plan.
And Dawn, that's from Donna White. Um, we have to make a decision on that and if we wanna add anything to it, is that a call?
And then the, the, how she explained it to me is that the existing ones have to, uh, a, a formal application has to be filled out for the existing ones. And then if you need, uh, new ones, then you fill out a separate one, so.
Would be by the spot, by the agency, like the department looking for it?
And then this is probably something I, I'm sure, could I include that in your document?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so you have the current existing capital reserves.
So each capital reserve has to be reapplied for?
Yeah, yeah, they're just basically saying that they, in case you wanna change the dollar amounts, you know, inflation could potentially change.
Okay.
And you wanna keep a, a tax rate flat, then you wanna, you know, look at that as a whole.
Will you be assisting the par- chairs? Right, okay.
And I asked her, Lean and I asked her about the CIP for the land purchase. And she said that one's gonna stay as it's existing, cause we'll donate to that as we see fit yearly.
Yeah, or you don't have to put any dollar amount in that capital reserve?
Yeah.
Because if you look at the scale, there was some there that have zero. Um, but, and the bottom of the total, when you wanna look at the tax rate impact, that's when you wanna consider.
And while, while we're on that one, there was an email sent out to all of us about reconfiguring this building. I think we should just hold off on that for this, at this point.
Reconfiguring, like in?
Donna sent an email out to the selectmen to maybe recon- there was talk of reconfiguring these offices or something to the-
Yeah.
Effect to give more room to different people and I think that-
One, one thing though-
We should hold off at this point.
Well, I like to get on the radar scope though, but one thing we wanted to do is, um, I wanted to make separate, a separate office with a town administrator possibly. Whether put a wall up or something like that down the road. And I think is I don't wanna wait three years on it. Because it's a, the thing is, uh-
That can be done just out of our town budget.
But I, I wanna make sure it's, it's considered. The only reason I say that is because, um, Lean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about you though. Lean is get, gets bombarded with everyone walks through the door. And she, she's like, very rarely will she say no. Sometimes she does and people get pissed off, but sometimes, most of the time, she'll say, I'll help you. And she, it has, it impacts her work of getting-
She likes that though.
I know, but that's, we're gonna cut her off from the public.
Keeps her busy.
But we're gonna cut her off from the public some way. And I think it's, I think a little privacy is warranted.
So, something doesn't have to go to the ceiling either, like that wall separates it enough too, if she could get her work.
Would you, Curly?
I definitely need some separation because there's a lot of times I'm working on things and I'm so focused that people walk in like my desk.
You have that wall that we could go up with that wall, like that wall.
Yeah, right now my cabinets in that section roll open if I open, take the lock. I put, we purchased these inexpensive bar locks. So I just wanna make sure that the wall will, you know, and if you look at underneath in the basement, right in that area, there's like three rocks holding that joist, so there might be something more that we install in the basement to hold that.
That's what you want.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I, I think you're right, it could be done in-house.
Yes, I think that's a small amount that we could do in-house.
You don't, a CIP is fifteen thousand dollars on above and that?
No, I, I, I don't think it would be that much.
No.
So.
I think it's, ah- You should probably have some sort of see-through section so she can still see through the door, but-
The, the other option is to flip-flop the offices so that in the event I needed privacy, I could have work in this office and then put building and assessing together down the other end where they used to be combined. And then they would have the full reign of the vault, which is where all the records go from deeds to, you can merge permits. And then having the back room-
You don't use the vault much?
No, I, I refer to it.
That might be a better idea, actually, you need to switch offices.
This small office in the back could be set up for welfare. Because welfare needs confidentiality, she's gonna meet with a client. And so that, that was another option that, you know, just-
So they could at least close the door and shut the public out from now.
And then where the meetings are kept here, then the records are right there, so it's a little bit closer. And if I needed quiet, close the door and, you know, and-
Yeah, yeah, that, that sounds almost reasonable.
Yeah, that is something we can look throughout the year.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, I like-
There's nothing that needs CIP.
No, but, no, I keep that on the table though for, for future. Okay, good. Not, not CIP, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So no-
The other thing is make sure that, uh, you know, the flow of work will still get done putting different people together.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, cause a lot of the times it seems like, even when I'm in here, that you need, they need assistance down in your office to, when people come in, sometimes you have the answer for where certain people need to go. So to take you out of that scenario, they may be fun calling you.
No, they would have to learn because when I'm working from home, I do it purposely because I know that if I'm not there, they will find the answer. And if they don't, can't find the answer, they will-
No, you just say Lean will be in tomorrow.
Come back tomorrow, Lean will be here.
Who are you kidding?
All right. So noted, I think is, I think, uh, this might be a good year to consider that and as we go forward. And uh, again, my three maintenance projects, I wanna knock out. I wanna make sure you have a dry roof. A roof that keeps the area dry.
Yeah.
And those are my three biggies and, and a gas-
This roof, just to repeat, does not leak.
No.
Yeah.
Does not leak. The only leak was in the vault and that came through a pipe, a ventilation pipe, not through the roof.
And I think the, uh, behind the electrical panel in that hallway, it was the same thing, the chimney, I think, was-
Flashing?
Flashing was weeping or pulled away.
Yeah, it was all prior to this one that's updated now.
Okay. All right, um, let's continue on. So we got the homework CIP packets reviewed. Public comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, on the office swap, food for thought, would you have to change the, uh, the push-button locks to, to the doors, bring the master one down here?
No, we're, uh-
Because other, you, to work in your office, you're still gonna go way down there. Or if you're gonna leave, you're gonna go way down there.
Yeah, it's not any different than now. If I walk, if I leave last, I check the building, make sure the doors are locked.
Yeah, just threw that out just in case.
So noted, that's good. What do you need?
Are you saying that her office would need to be, need to be locked in the office?
Well, if she moves her office down here, the, the, you've got, uh, the, the selectmen's locks down there, you also got the main locks on the doors for the lamps.
Yeah.
You know? I just curious, would you have to change stuff around?
No.
Yeah, would you need this lock?
No. I don't wanna say it over there.
Okay. This, this locks anyway, Dawn does lock it, but it locks. Yeah, okay. Uh, but thank you for bringing that up. That's a good point. Right, okay, uh, but thank you for bringing that up, that's a good point, nothing, okay, uh, back to the board, I'm gonna start with town administrator.
Still working on the town reports, getting close to, um, finalized, now that I have the, the vote and the numbers, I'll be putting that together, um, next week, I'll be following up with the MS six thirty-six and the actual warrant for the board to sign, and we can do that at the next week's meeting.
Okay.
Cause the draft that you have in your packet is still incomplete, there's, um, twenty twenty-two numbers that have to be entered, which have been entered as of today, but, um, just waiting for that final review of the DRA, so.
Okay, good, anything else?
No.
Justin to you.
Malcolm.
Dave to you.
Um, I'm just gonna do a quick town hall update.
I understand the doors are on.
Front doors are on.
Yep.
Um, still waiting for a couple of mechanism adjustments on that coming in Friday, I think.
And I heard the electricity is off, does that mean the panels being installed?
Panel got installed today, it's all wired up, power's back on.
Excellent.
Second floor is all drywall, so drywall hung, they'll be, um, they'll be, uh, finishing it next week.
Okay.
And then we'll have a painter come in after that. I have, uh, I have met with Irish Electric on the panel replacement over at the town, um.
Fire department.
Department, so they're gonna give assessment on that, you should see that coming over.
That's what, uh, did the Monday's appointment is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I also, um, brought him downstairs in the basement down there, there are no good light switches down in that basement, or he can attest to this, um, there's a bunch of bulbs that are out, um, and the bulbs are so sparse that the light is so bad down there, I asked him to give us a price, and I was like, fifteen new, or no, nine new bulbs, you know, pull chain bulbs, down there, light that up like it's supposed to be, and have switches on the doors appropriate to turn the lights, you can't find a switch in the building to turn lights on and off, you have to go upstairs, and it's a, it's a. Well, you talked in the library. Yeah, the light, the, well, the town hall basement, and, uh, it just, uh, so I asked him to give us an estimate on that, should, should only be a few hundred dollars, but the, uh.
While they're in town doing work on a fire station that could be on the same day, just get the estimate appropriate.
Just so you know, the, the electrical panel estimate was uncovered in twenty twenty-two, it was on a different vendor's name, that's the one that hasn't returned our call.
Yep.
So there is money set aside for the.
Oh, good.
For John's panel.
Yeah, we'll see when it comes in, it may be covered under that.
And the other thing I asked him to do is look at the, um, the guy doing the stage lighting and AV system up there, had electrical requirements that he emailed over to me, which we're not paying for, but I did have them go through that with Irish Electric as well.
As for us painters, uh, uh, we look at that, uh.
I have two painting bids coming in and two floor bids.
Okay, good.
I got one bid which I won't share, but on the floors, I'm all ready, so.
We require three, I believe, till, if it's under ten thousand.
Yep.
Now, the floor is being covered under that donation that was given, or is that?
The floor and the walls if we can.
Painting?
I don't know what the money is, so.
Okay, so, we're not really held to the, we can give them the choice.
Yeah.
Okay, without recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's cool, I like it a little bit that.
So, uh, there's a bunch of subcontractors finalizing all their small things, um, the wall sconces that were in place when I did the, um, architect walkthrough were not seven feet to the bottom, so they moved those all up.
You said that, yeah, they moved it up.
Patricia moved them up, Bobby's patching all the walls, the painters coming back in.
There, there was an issue that, um, Lean brought up this week about the electric bill, being off the, off the.
Lean and I spent a little bit of time going through that, and what we're finding is it's not really off, we were looking at how it was billed to us.
Okay.
And how it was adjusted, and, uh, we were looking at the differences between the solar panels and the bill, and Lean and I came up with a formula here that looks like we're gonna be able to itemize how much money we could be making, and the other thing is, um, the majority of that bill, they did a, uh, they did a panel, when that panel was being changed from the old one to the new one on the wall.
Yes.
They did an estimated amount.
Okay.
So they didn't do an actual reading, now they can do an actual reading.
So we may, they may have overbilled us for the, on the estimate.
Yeah, I spent fifteen minutes on the phone and I couldn't get through anybody to talk to, and we just signed off and said, they'll read it next month, the only other thing is, I will say that those entryways are running those, um, Mitsubishi, it's heating and cooling.
Right.
It's electric heat, and these times of months.
It's been cold.
It's been cold, and that heat is gonna be up every year from now on in that entryway, because of how we're heating it.
The other thing is, uh, electricity went up a lot, pretty, yeah, I mean, a lot.
Yes, a very lot.
I mean, I, I, like, like, uh, it was like a hundred percent increase.
So that was what Lean and I were looking at, because the bills went up, and I said, you know, the bill shouldn't be going up, cause we're paying the delivery cost, which goes up, but we also had that eight fifteen we're paying to keep it flat, and if, if it keeps rising like this, we may not wanna buy that system, we might wanna keep the eight fifteen for the thirty years, you know, cause it's.
It's arachnid.
It's gonna get to a point where it's not gonna pay us money, it's, we're gonna be lucky if it's paying for itself once the, the panels start going down, so we did look at that.
The, I asked, um, just to let you know, the, uh, energy committee is gonna have, they've got a good spread for the, uh, town report, and it gives a, a potential savings, they were talking about that a little bit, I did ask them up for that, I said, make it so the public can understand, the money we're saving now, which is minimal, but the muddle load is about four years off, I think we're two years out of the six, and the thing is, when the muddle load comes in, that's gonna be wonderful.
Our bills look like they're getting credited.
Oh, they are, but not by much.
Um, in some months, they are in the summer.
Yeah, but, but, but not, the thing is.
I'm surprised we're seeing it on our bill at all, it's not supposed to.
But it's not, well, we, if it goes above a certain amount, it does, but what I'm saying is, once we own them, the muddle load comes in, I mean, it's all free, it's all like, uh, free electricity for us.
Well, we're seeing it now.
Some, not a lot.
Yeah, during the summer months, we are.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Dave?
I think that's it over there, I'm trying to think if I forgot, but anyways, all the subs are pretty much winding down, all the odds and ends they have to do.
Okay, I understand, kudos to the transfer station folks for coming up and cleaning.
Yeah, they did a great job, in fact, Woody, I'm ready for you, the electrician, got his stuff out of the basement, so a good sweep, clean, and a vacuum down there, um, would be ready, they've hung all the sheet rock upstairs, they're gonna sand early next week, after they do the mudding, and after that, we'll probably, we can do a vacuum before the painter gets in there.
Lean's, uh, monitoring the, well, I think it goes towards the maintenance line?
Yes.
Cause I don't wanna eat up his budget, his.
I don't care.
Well, he kept it kinda tight, so I respect that, I do.
And just for you, your information, all that hard work that you had them do by moving all that stuff, I asked them to document it, so we typed up the list, and now we know what's been moved to that trailer, and in the event, you, you're looking for something, we can reference that and see what we've got, if we need to do some repairs with old, um, woodwork or anything.
Yeah, there is, um, some lumber that was in there from back on an earlier stage repair, it doesn't have anything to do with this new building, and that lumber, I told Woody, he could use in his shelves or whatever he wants to.
I was gonna play.
That was from their attic repair.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
Nope.
All right, to me, um, I did have something. I just wanna, um, give kudos to the transportation manager again, uh, indirectly, the police chief man Clumett.
Yeah.
Gentleman, on his own time, not on the town's time, went across the street, helped out the police department, pulled out some snow, about a week and a half, thank you, and, uh, it was acknowledged, uh, the police chief acknowledged that, and, uh, put a shout out for you, so thank you.
Yeah, you guys did a good job on the walkway on that building as well.
There's a little controversy about where we store the snow blower, we're working through that.
I can tell you where it is right now.
I, I don't even wanna know.
Okay.
You get the job done nicely, legally, that's all I care. Okay, um, I'm, I'm on, open for a motion, gentlemen.
Take a motion, take adjourn. At eight fourteen. You made it. Now, Mike, I'm gonna ask you to slow down, talk to the.